We'll open up our special session of April seventeenth, twenty twenty. Please silence and shut off your cell phones, join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone, and we have people on the phone. Is the road department on the phone?
Department might not have service.
Okay. District Attorney with office?
Yeah.
And Nikki, are you on the phone? And who have I missed on the phone? Who else is on?
Sheriff's office is here, Brad, Paul.
Okay, Paul, sorry, I missed you. Anybody else? All right, with that, we're going to get started. We run these every week, everybody knows. Just a little bit overview, the Board of Commissioners, we're all working together on with other counties and with our state senators, representatives. What is it going to look like and where do we go from here trying to, trying to take our best shot? We deal with almost every day, the businesses and the people that are struggling to, just to survive this as our constituents. And it's quite challenging trying to balance that along with the hospital and the worries and keeping social distancing, going there to get to slow down of this out there. So as you're hearing things out there, good, positive, negative, or whatever, the Board of Commissioners are quite unified in trying to find a way that we can open up our county, follow the governor's order and support from the governor to be able to try to get our businesses, some revenues coming back in. And we, like I say, we hear calls almost every day from the White House to the state, to local. And we're running into some real challenges, just trying to, trying to keep our community strong, keep our businesses going, and find a way to open up with social distancing, these other, these businesses that aren't making any revenues at all. And at the same time, being respectful and trying to bring all other players to the table on the healthcare side of it, so that we continue to slow down this, whenever it hits here, that it doesn't overwhelm our hospitals. So we need support with that as our team, as our county team, we need suggestions. Hardy County is looking at being a pilot through the governor's office of reopening in a slow fashion, within reason, within laws, to build, get some of their business back going. They put together a real good letter that's been very well supported. So I think both other commissioners, we're all working on this, been doing some work. I think James has a little bit probably to add to that.
I can pull up a little, some of the points actually that Hardy County is looking at. And what we've been kind of talking about amongst ourselves. We want to try and, we want to get our, our small boutiques and gyms open and easily, so they can easily save their day equipment. Limit customers and sanitize equipment, following use, following standard practices already in place. We want to get our barbers and cosmetologists open, we want to be able to even get our restaurants and bars back open, and of course also follow many of the social distancing rules and guidance from the state. Many other states are already talking about this and doing this, and you will likely be seeing some states open back up this next week because they're ready and they're not seeing the impacts in the same way, and they believe that they're ready to take on whatever challenges are coming in front of them. For us here in Lake County, we obviously, we, we have to wait to see what the governor says, pretty much. Otherwise, our businesses risk losing their licenses, they risk losing any access to small business loans, they risk. We can't do anything unless we move together as one state. And we've had a number of frustrations, I think, through all this, and just to be perfectly frank, I think it was the issue, and I'm sure everyone saw this in the news, where our governor chose to form an agreement with California and Washington and not make a move to reopen unless they were willing to. That, of course, has caused a lot of friction in our community. This is not something that we have any control over, this is just, this is what we are having to work with. And our senators and representatives have been extremely supportive, we spoke with some of them this morning on the call at seven. We're going to keep moving forward with trying to come up with a plan to, to open because that is what the governor is asking for. It was item one of page four of her framework plan that she put out, where she is asking local leaders specifically for their input on how we would like to open up our counties. We don't know yet whether or not the governor is looking at allowing counties to open up on a regional basis within the state. Don't have that information yet. That is something our president has advocated for when he spoke with the governors yesterday and the day before, to, that governors would allow regions within their own states to open. But he is, as of right now, the president has taken the position that the states, the states have the ability and the individual governors to open their states as they see fit, and he will support them in that. He would like to see our nation open back up to some degree by May first. But he understands that not every state will be there and not, and not be able to open up. Some states, it may take longer, but that is a state-by-state basis, we're a very big country. And for some regions, it will look differently. So that's, for us right now, we're just going to focus on trying to gather the proper data and information and facts that we can make a reasonable, logical, and fact-based decision on opening up our county, at least even if it's in a phased process. So that's kind of where I personally am at, I kind of think that my board is in the same place. But that's pretty much all I have to add.
If I'm gonna go ahead and read this, if it's okay?
Oh, perfect, it's fine.
So the, this is what I, the letter that I was going to bring to you yesterday, Judy. I haven't sent it out yet, I still, I'd be glad for anybody to give any kind of critiquing or adding or taking away of it. But there are seventeen counties in Eastern Oregon with a total population of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-five people. Out of the five hundred and fifty-nine thousand and two, two hundred and thirty-five people, one hundred and thirty have COVID-19 with zero deaths as of today. This is point zero, 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 two percent of the population of Eastern Oregon that have the virus. And ninety-eight percent, or five hundred and forty-eight thousand and fifty Eastern Oregonians, have some kind of adverse effect financially. These statistics don't take into account the rise in alcohol and substance abuse, depression, anxiety, child abuse, and domestic violence. We all know the problems, but we, we all don't think, but I don't think people realize that only point zero, 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 two percent of the population have the virus. The medical field in Lake County is still estimating a loss of one hundred and forty to two hundred people, and Judy corrected me, they changed that to ninety.
Twenty-two hundred and twenty, I think, is the last.
Ninety to?
I think ninety to one hundred and twenty, Daniel, am I correct on that?
Lake County is still estimating a loss of ninety to one hundred and twenty people over the age of seventy will die from the virus. That's two percent of the population and eleven percent death rate. The death rate for Oregon right now is point zero, 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 one, three, or one death in every seventy-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-two people. Last year in Oregon, influenza claimed two hundred and forty people in Oregon, which is a death rate of point zero, 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 six. This doesn't mean that I don't care about the loss of life, the ones that died from the virus. But we do have to consider all things affecting our community, including financial, well-being of those being affected. My thoughts are to have a soft opening with social distancing still in place, wearing a face mask where appropriate or if a business requires it, keeping crowds to a minimum of ten or less, and those over seventy years of age or with immune deficiencies, can you, continue sheltering in place when possible. That's what I have right now, and I'm more than happy to take on any add or subtract anything. I just wanted people to see what the actual death rate is, I mean, one in seventy-two thousand people. And, which is less than the flu, I almost half. And so I'm not, I'm not saying the virus isn't deadly, I'm not saying it isn't very contagious, but we can't continue to live this way. For one, you either live dying or die living, and we're going to have to get used to living with this sort of thing and to continue to work and continue to take precautions.
Mark, can you tell us how they, how you guys come up with the math of how many people are going to be lost in Lake County?
Well, I haven't got that answer. I tried to get it yesterday and I still don't have that. There are projections, I know there's several scientists and doctors in the medical field around the world and country giving us projections. I'm usually, I'm using the factual data that Oregon Health Authority has already put out, that's how I got my numbers. So what I did was I took every population of every county in Eastern Oregon, the numbers from the Oregon Health Authorities, and that's the math that I got. And so although I don't have a projection, I'm showing what it is right now. And if the data continues to stay the same, one point two people in Lake County will get the virus. Zero will die. I hope that's the case, but nevertheless, nevertheless, this is a terrible problem, but we have to continue living. We have to continue living, I mean, we can't sustain working for it. And because it's going to be worse than depression, it's going to, or recession, it's going to be full-on depression and free cheese lines if you can get it. And we're talking terrible financial. And that, that's the state and the feds too, the, how can the state or the federal government support this kind of financial loss? And giving all this money away, it's, you know, Lake County gets a lot of money from the state every year. So I'm thinking about that too, you know? All of our programs, everything that happens, that we have to have money from the state. If the state don't have any money, what does that mean for our county? That's, you know, to the point where, are we going to have to certainly hand people off? Are we going to have to, you know, be down to one or two people in every department? But we have to do something, and we need to be thinking ahead of what we can do to help, you know? And so an uprising isn't going to help us, you know? The state has control over the purse strings, unfortunately. And like Commissioner Winter said, if we defy the governor's orders, not only will those businesses be eliminated for a chance of getting money, so will our county. So to tail on to that a little bit, we're very fortunate to David Brown getting some tests to Lake County, and I brought that forward to Judy, James has been working on that. The numbers that Mark's talking about, we don't have the data that we have. And so some of us think maybe it's throughout Eastern Oregon, it's came through. So this, this antigen test and antibody test, once it's fully implemented and everything, we will know some different numbers possibly. So I want to put a positive spin on that side of it. We, we were an alpha here, and James can talk more about it, it came through me, Judy is, he's, he's the brains behind trying to understand it along with Judy, but if, if you had it and you have that antigens in your blood, possibly that, that plasma becomes quite valuable later on. So, but we're fortunate to have these fifty tests here, dependent upon the hospital to get those fifty tests used. And James, would you take over?
Here, I'm sure.
On how that's going to happen?
So in meeting with the hospital yesterday, we had a really good discussion, I, I learned a lot. And apparently, we actually have more than just the fifty tests, which is good because I believe these tests actually have to work. I believe you have to administer several at a time, pretty much, in a way that OHSU is actually wanting these things to be administered. But we need to, I'm currently working on trying to make sure that the OHSU is in good communication with our hospital and our laboratory, and making sure that they're giving our guys everything that they need. I have an, I have a call at ten, actually, that's supposed to hopefully be able to work through some of the logistics on that, to make sure that we can kind of start moving in that direction, and that our hospital and our laboratory has all the support they need. The key point for this is because of, we heard about this, I was researching this several weeks ago. And when it came up, this possibility of being able to acquire some of these tests, I reached out and tried to get a better feel for what these tests actually were, what the, what the specifications were behind them. And then immediately after that, of course, we also heard on our White House call that this is, these are the exact tests that the White House is wanting different counties and states to, to acquire, for additional testing, because they do something different than the tests that we are currently typically using. They test for whether or not you had the virus and recovered. Lake County currently has no cases, so it calls into question something that we believe is, it's still a guess, both, both, both are guesses. If sixty percent of our population has already been infected and, or, and we're just kind of hitting the tail end of these things and reaching what the CDC defines as herd immunity, that would imply that what might be a reason for why we're not seeing the positive cases that we, when we know that the virus is here in Lake County and has been here in Lake County. In which case, we have to, we have to ask ourselves, you know, then why are we still shut down? We should probably start moving towards opening back up. But if in fact only ten percent of our population has been infected, we're looking at ninety percent of our population that are yet to be infected, in which case we need to be very cautious about how we open back up and expose that ninety percent of our population. But both of those are guesses because we don't yet have enough facts to move forward, and we as commissioners are faced with making a decision and presenting facts and plan to our governor as to what we would like to do. So the antigen tests are key for a number of reasons, one of them being that we can find out who has had the test and is carrying the antibodies and antigens and is no longer a threat. And in fact, they should be able to get straight back to work. It's fast-acting, the test results come within ten minutes. This is not an FDA-approved test, however, which is another reason why the White House is pushing it, because it's a new test. We need to get these tests to a point where they are FDA-approved, so when this virus comes back around, we have the tools needed, our health care has the tools needed to address these issues, so we don't have to look at shutdowns again. The, the tests that we have and the tests that the hospital already had, because apparently they did have a few as well, but they were still dealing with this communication with the OHSU that we're, we're trying to solve that issue. These, the results from the tests have to be taken by OHSU and passed on to the FDA, where that data in turn will hopefully lead us to a point where we have an FDA-approved test. At that point, if we have in fact been infected earlier than we originally thought, which is something that's being discussed in all of our counties, pretty much, and throughout the entire state and most of the nation, pretty much as far as I know, and our White House is talking about it. If we were in fact infected earlier and we have no guarant, no diagnosed cases of COVID-19, that leaves our entire population unable to give plasma and help with presenting blood to fight this contagion because we have no verified cases. And according to the Red Cross, you need to have a verified case and then fully recover from COVID-19 in order to get blood. If we have an antigen body, an antibody test that is FDA-approved and it's proven that you have a pos, you had the coronavirus and recovered, that opens our county up to finding additional people that can get blood and help with this disease. So this is one step towards moving towards a direction to where we can find out exactly what the numbers are in our county and find out who has had it and who hasn't, so we can present those facts to the government and move towards an actual fact-based plan on opening our county back up. Yes, Kevin?
Quick question about this antigen test. You know, I've heard the same rumors that it might have passed through earlier. How would we determine who gets tested then?
We would, the, the OHSU and the FDA are asking us to test people who have been sick at all in the last three to four months, pretty much. And being that of the thirty-some-odd thousand people that have been tested in the state, only fifteen, sixteen hundred of them have proven positive, I would like to know what the other twenty to nine thousand people had. Because it seems like that's a big number, and so if, if the test that we're using have a thirty percent likelihood of producing a false negative, it stands likely that in fact the contagion could be possibly worse than what the numbers are showing. But all the more reason to provide antibody and antigen tests for our healthcare professionals to find out what the actual numbers are, so we can attack this from several angles.
Well, and right here in Lake County, Kevin, there's a lot of people are self-quarantined, who's not getting into test at all.
Yeah.
So I would think through the healthcare professionals, they would have a list of those people that self-quarantined, was the recommendation, a lot of it's based on their age, that, that it's not going to impact them as much. So I would think they would have a real good strategy of who they could possibly test, see if they carry the antigen. Go ahead, Judy.
They've already started, so we've had testing, I can't give you the exact number, they've all been negative of people that they felt might have had it, and the, the tests have come back negative. We have had, we have a couple hundred tests available to us at the hospital that they are working together to pick and choose who's getting tested for that. But I know we have had some testing already going on, and they've been, yes.
So they have already tested, but and those results may be cast on the OHSU and?
And those were negative. This, so I don't know, this is not the fifty, this was through other, other things, so I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay, correct.
I don't think that, it sounded as though Jenny said that they weren't doing that. So that's a Jenny question, I don't know the answer, I don't know exactly how many.
Yeah, we'll follow up and I'll touch base with her.
But I do know they have had testing because they've come through me. And I know that they've all been negative, and I know they're talking about who they might start testing more on.
Is this the new test you're talking about?
I'm talking about, it's.
Or the same, or the whole test?
No, actually, the new test that most people are talking about was the Abbott machine, which is still just a modified.
Yeah. To see if you have it.
Yeah, that's to see if you have it, so it's a modified piece of.
That's weird, that, that's the test you're talking about right now?
I'm talking about, they have the antigen, you can, they, they've already been testing for the people to see if they've had it in the past and recovered, they're already doing that.
Okay.
And they, we have received tests through other places, it's a different brand name than the one that fifty that came through. So there's, it's the same test, but through other companies, that we have been able to obtain some and, and start testing. Jenny's keeping those until she talks with the, the state to know the process so that she can do that.
Absolutely. And I'm pushing to try and make sure that the state coordinates with her.
So she's keeping that separate.
And our senators and representatives are aware of this as well, and whatever pressure we can, we can utilize to make sure that the OHSU is talking to all of our healthcare professionals, all of our laboratories in the state, the better. Because we are moving in this direction of ramping up the data to be able to make, make these decisions that we're kind of being forced to make on a local level, and we need to come up with a plan. As a segue into that, I'd like to ask my board if they feel it would be prudent to pull a meeting together next Tuesday to kind of discuss the possibilities of putting together an advisory committee, if you will. Don't really have a name for it yet, but something to where we can kind of move towards coming, coming up with a plan for exiting. And maybe have a number of different people from either, well, it would be very wonderful if we could have a doctor on that board and, and our, of course, our OEM, our public health, and maybe the IC and others, and of course, the Board of Commissioners, I'd like to at least have us included in that so we can really discuss what this plan is going to look like and iron this out sooner rather than later.
What are your two, Daniel and Judy's availability time on Tuesday?
I think I'm good all day?
Yeah, I can make myself. I don't know what my schedule is, but I can certainly make myself available.
It's kind of meeting up at one thirty, one, two thirty, and four.
Well, I'd give Commissioner Albertson trying to get out of bed if we do it.
Never can tell.
Two o'clock, well, we have, we might ought to go along because we have a three o'clock economic recovery.
Unless you wanted to do it in the morning.
My mornings are better.
So one o'clock would work for you, or?
I'll be running work.
Okay. I, I misunderstood whether or not you had another.
There's a conference call in the state at one o'clock.
Okay, there's a conference call of mine, okay, so you have a?
Ten o'clock Tuesday, how's that work?
That works good.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
So I'll try and make it.
Okay. So have a, a couple updates. Jay, I asked him, give a little bit of update of how, how it's going with our employees and what sick leave and people time off and everything. And it's just, just an update of how, and I, I guess I probably should say, as a staff meeting, this is the board. We're pretty much staying closed this next week to the same operations we're doing now. We're working on trying to find a way to get opened up, but we're, we're not going to jump the gun on anything until we have a lot of things confirmed and work with our governor's team and other things. Next week, it's operation the same as this week, but go ahead, Jay.
Yeah, so if you're sick, stay home. If you've got a family member that's sick and you're in contact, you're going to stay home. If you've been quarantined or you're self-quarantined because, well, whatever reason that you've self-quarantined, you're waiting for a diagnosis or treatment, stay home. As of April second, every employee got eighty hours of COVID-19-related sick leave put into their sick bank. If you have a COVID-19-related leave incident, we will use those eighty hours if we won't do that from your regular sick bank. If you have this situation, they'll call me or Nikki, we need to talk about it, there's a lot of details. You know, for some of these situations, you'll be entitled to two-thirds of the pay. For others, you're entitled to a hundred percent, but you can always use your own sick leave in addition to this COVID-19 sick bank. So like I said, a lot of the details. We want people to be safe here, we've got to get the work done. But if you feel like you're being asked to do something that's not safe, come talk about it. Work has to get done, we need to find a way to do it. At this point, we're relying on department heads to schedule and staff departments as needed. And as far as we can tell, it, it's working, we're getting the job done. And I have had no complaints about people being put in the situations they don't want to be.
So the, the biggest question that probably I've heard is, is if somebody stays home, basically quarantined, how soon can they come back? And I think I heard Judy last week, seventy-two hours after there's no symptoms seems to be the standard?
If it's an essential worker, if it's a non-essential worker, it's seventy-two hours after the last symptom or, without medicine, or seven days, whichever's longest. So they want you home at seven days. But if your fever or cough or whatever sore throat goes past that, then it's seventy-two hours after that. But if you're an essential worker, it's seventy-two hours after your symptoms and then you're gonna wear a mask.
So that, that, that's a question I did ask by the business department head and officials, that we need to sort of follow that.
So as an employer, we're not doctors, we have to rely on, um, medical professionals. If they're seeing a doctor, we rely on their, their advice. If they're not, we rely on the advice of, of our public health.
Does anybody have questions of our healthcare department or any thoughts or anything? All right, Daniel, you're next. And Melanie, we're your, our information person. Step in anytime, these presentations, you've got the tab too.
So no real big news, I mean, we've got a couple of sheets of PPE. We distribute that to a lot of our fire EMS folks in the sheriff's office. So that's all been distributed. And then, um, our last ship we got in about three days ago. So that went to a hospital, the staging area at the hospital and just wait there.
So are, are on that or are we pretty good shape on the amount of PPEs?
I think so, so the big thing they're doing is these burn rates. Um, the hospital's turning on a burn rate and whenever we fire any department, all English folks, three times a week have turned burn rates. They're kind of complicated. And all North Lake was, I don't think they exactly have time to do it three times a week, they'll try to do it weekly. But they are keeping track of that burn rate, so they're the one to ship us stuff. There's a process, it's complicated.
Which will change greatly if we open up elective surgeries, because then we're going to use PPEs. And, and, and so that's part of that issue is if we open that up and then we get cases, have we used our PPE for elective procedures instead of saving it? Or if we need it, I mean, it's just, it's such a hard call.
Right.
So I, I have a question on the PPEs. When we do get a positive case and our landfill manager is right behind you and we have a positive case, are you, is the hospital going to destroy those PPEs? Are they just going to haul, throw them in the same bucket that's going out to landfill or?
I think it's just like with the flu, they would, they, they would, um, dispose of it like they do flu, which is not special because it dies. You put it in a bag, it dies over time and it just gets disposed of. I believe, I don't think anything extra will be shipped to Klamath, but I could be wrong, I'm not sure about that.
Well, ju- just for, on the other side of the world, to try to protect our employees at our landfill is if we do get a case and you do have the contaminating thing, I would like to see the hospital keep those separated so that, so that we're able to manage our landfill out there in a fashion to, to bill that if it's seventy-two hours, they have to stay over here before they go to landfill. And, uh, the COVID nineteen is dead by then would make sense to us. Um, we're very limited on our number of employees out there, so one of them goes home, it's hard to manage too. So just a thought on that.
I'll bring it up.
Have any more? Judy, you're next, are you good?
I really don't have anything, we have sixty-three tested, seven pending today, that's my latest news.
Very good. Melanie, you have anything on the information side? Uh, thank you for getting information out daily and stuff, we appreciate that. Mel?
Um, the state does have something from the circuit court. Um, something that was brought up recently is that, um, ADA, ADA accessibility to get into the courthouse is an issue. So we had, um, a gentleman that needed to be at the court and, um, wasn't able to read the sign and communicate. And so he did not gain access. And so part of that has been, a- and we've actually had two instances of people saying that they can't get in with special needs. And so I don't know if there's something we can do as far as additional signage, if we can maybe put some of that, I mean, bilingual even, I mean, a lot of our Spanish speaking customers, I, I mean, are we helping them? Can they read those signs, can they communicate with us? I mean, some courthouses are staffing, you know, having people let those others in. We had some issues yesterday where somebody got turned away for a warrant. Um, it's just, the process isn't necessarily working out there.
So I would, I, I, I hear, I appreciate where you're going. So signage for your operations that needs to be bilingual or whatever, get it together and put it on the door.
I, I agree with that. Um, in the one instance, the gentleman, um, was hearing impaired stuff and he couldn't communicate.
You looked directly at me when you said that, huh?
Well, I'm just saying that, you know, so he wasn't able to call in because he didn't have a phone that could translate for him, right? He can't speak at the buzzer because nobody, he can't read their lips and they can't communicate back with him. And so he had no way to gain access to this building. And so the concern that I have is that the circuit court is supposed to have access at all times. And with the courthouse being shut down the way it is, it's limiting that access. I already have one tort claim where I'm listed as an individual in there because of the limited access that people have had to that. And again, they're saying it's because of a disability. So I don't want the state or the county to be getting into a situation where people are, you know, doing litigation because they don't have access. And so it's just something I want to bring to your attention that I think that process isn't working right now. And this is the second complaint we've had. And the last thing I'd want to see is it escalate to anything additional. So do with it what you would like.
So do you have a solution or suggestion?
I do, but you're not going to like it, somebody needs to staff it. You need to have somebody in the lobby the hours that you're open. They need to screen and they need to let people into the other departments or upstairs. And I know that, that's not ideal, but I think that that's what other courthouses are doing. You need to have somebody there to screen those people in or, and allow them in or not. But we, at, you know, by statute, and we've had this conversation, the circuit court, you guys have to provide people accessibility to us and right now they're not. And like I said, unfortunately, that's put me in a situation, the state meets even personally where I'm listed in a tort claim.
So, so where's the partnership with the state?
Right.
To build, to staff this? Could, could it be staffed, um, half day by county, half day by state employee?
Absolutely. And that's, that's the other thing, if we can come up to some kind of resolution where we can partner share, you know, partner with that, absolutely. I'm not saying that it should only be on the county, I just want it to be aware that what's happening now isn't working.
Well, this, this falls right into what we're talking about, about getting back to somewhat normal and operations.
Right. And I, I will say.
On the ADA side of it.
The county departments, um, have been fantastic to work with. I know yesterday we had a meeting and Jake was, you know, willing, we talked about treatment courts and other things. He's like, hey, you know, if we need to screen people in, I'm all about helping you. I know that, you know, Charlie had helped, uh, screening people in and that kind of thing. Um, and they've been really great, but I think departments are unfortunately sort of, um, getting frustrated, you know, blame is getting laid on others and so we need to remain super positive and work together. And absolutely, if you guys want us to staff at half a day, we can do something like that.
Well, I just threw that out there because I wasn't aware of and hadn't thought of this, but it sort of falls into, what is the courthouse, how, how we get back to somewhat normal? But I have, I thought we covered on the ADA, but I never thought of the hearing impaired or?
I, I didn't either until it came, till it was brought to our attention. And then the unfortunate part is since the gentleman wasn't here, then a warrant is being issued for his arrest. But he was here, but nobody knew that because he couldn't get in. Jake?
Uh, just for clarification, I volunteered my staff for a treatment court days, not just all, all days.
Right.
I feel my, my department, my staff have been taking on a lot to try and help get through things and to ask them to man a door so court can run, I, I can't do that. I, I've, or my staff did. We're trying to get some normalcy. We're trying to recoup and regather and try and get our clients back together. Get supervision as opposed to monitoring that.
Wait, do you, you know?
So I did, I did volunteer for treatment court days so we can keep our, our drug court moving.
Right. In all fairness, we're all trying to get back to normalcy, so is a question.
I understand that.
I mean, we're all at that same struggle, we're all at that same pitch level, so.
No, I understand, I understand.
I mean, I'm offering as well to support that, I'm just saying, what we're doing now isn't working. That's it.
And I'm not, I'm not in the norm though either.
No, it's not, but.
So it's, there, it's a unique situation, I know. This is the first time I've ever heard anything about anybody not being able to get in the courthouse because they couldn't read or couldn't, but it's because the courthouse is closed down, so I've never ran into this before.
Exactly.
So this is all a new, new thing to me when you come to me the other day, that's why I didn't have answers for you the other day. As far as our ADA, if you're handicapped, you can get to the door. And for the most part, when we did have people like that, they could come in, they'd be sent looking, usually we're good about sending them the direction where they do need to go. Right now, they just can't come in and unfortunately, it's just the uniqueness of what we're going through right now. So that's part of this too.
So, so the question is, does it need, need to be eight thirty to five for the court?
No.
It's gonna be half days for ADA and for the court?
So it can be, uh, I think that what's hard is, is it always going to be their hearings at nine o'clock in the morning? No, you know, I mean, it could be anytime. Or somebody with a special need may have, you know, a stalking order or something else that they need to file that isn't necessarily scheduled. Does that make sense?
Was, was hearing impaired was scheduled?
Yes.
So how, where I was going with that was trying to think that if we as a board said that courthouse hours open to the public through screening is going to be eight to noon, would that be sufficient? And I, I'm one that says what's on my mind, it might be that we hire a temporary part-time person to man that door and not put that burden on your staff, your staff or another department. And we have consistency, you have one person there that is trained for that and they know how to do the screening and do all that stuff. And we don't have every department trying to volunteer a person for a half a day or whatever.
Well, I mean, it's just like I said, in all fairness, every department is stressed. Every department is pushed to the max where they don't have enough staff, they have way too much to do. We're not, you know, we're not being able to meet our customer needs. I mean, everybody's feeling that pressure already. And so if there's something like that, absolutely, I think we could, we could work around it. Like I said, more than anything, I want you guys to be aware of that. I don't want you guys to be caught where any of us are put in a situation that could result in negative litigation or publicity or in a negative impact on any of us over something that we could potentially control.
So Jay, if the board of commissioners said we're going to allow public access through screening, eight to noon, on an ADA side of it, if somebody comes in at a different time and we're not allowing them in and they don't get in, would we have potential lawsuit or anything on the ADA side of it?
Well, you can't plan for every contingency.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, that's, that would be okay. You, you need some signage, um, you know, there's vision impaired people that like, we're, these aren't normal times.
They, they, they aren't normal times. But then again, it gets back to the state, if you're mandated that you have to allow people the full day, we, we, we can close the courthouse to what we want, but we also have to, for the circuit court, there's.
But if you guys were doing something like that where you could, you know, for your part, you could do eight to noon, then we could do the remainder of the day. I mean, I, I couldn't make that work. It's not ideal, I'm short-staffed, we're stretched too. But because of the situation and to keep us all out of, you know, potential harm, it's definitely something that I could do.
So are all circuit courts in the state, like how are they, are they all open right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so like, if you go to Klamath, you're screened in.
Okay.
They're limited staff, but yeah, by law, you have to be open, we have to have access. And so, yeah, they, they're just screening people in.
I mean, most, most courthouses have paid security upfront, so they have them go through and metal detectors and
Right, right.
bats go through everything, so they have a paid, I believe in Klamath, it's sheriff's, sheriff's office against retired deputies that come back.
So, well, maybe we're at the, can you have a person there too? Do you have still need some work at home enough to?
Yeah, so we, what we do with, the state has asked us to do is we have two that are working remotely a week. So we have one, um, employee that, uh, because of her health needs to work from home. Um, so she's compromised, so she needs to be there. Um, and then we have Sheena and I, where we are the supervisor and the lead, we trade on and off so that we always potentially have a supervisor that's healthy. Um, and then, uh, like in Klamath, it's not here, but in Klamath, what we have is like, they will, they've quarantined a judge so that you still have, and then we would use the judge over there, Dave was, the Judge Vandenberg was to get sick, then we'd use them.
It was an idea, but I mean, if you're working remotely, I mean, we have wifi and everything right here, can you work remotely right here at the door and just let those guys?
Yep, and that's. Yep, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, is that definitely we could stop it. The one employee, unfortunately, um, we don't want her in here, uh, very limited. Um, so yeah, but definitely we can definitely, you know, as long as we can all, there's, um, three of us that can connect to the wifi and use a VPN, so we could definitely do that.
That's normal. Not gonna be. I don't know if I'm really there as far as hiring an additional person, I can't. There's a lot from out there. Yeah, I know.
The way, the way courthouses and employers deal with situations where they're, they just don't have the infrastructure to be able to accommodate people, it is by sending out notices. Um, if you put in every court notice, when you come to, you come to trial, the door's going to be locked, you'll have to contact somebody. If, if you can't do this, make, you need to make arrangements ahead of time. Or just different kinds of noti- notifications. It's not the best situation, but that kind of thing might work in the interim.
We can do that in the notifications. The problems are the people that need access that we're not notifying. So the notifications, you, you, when you're notified of court, we can send out an e-, uh, you either get an email, your attorney notifies you, or you get a paper and it says, you know, you have court such and such date. And then we have a space where we can put special comments. Not everybody that comes into the court is scheduled, right? So they don't get the notification.
Right, but that's why we put up the signage and stuff. Now, when the, when the one gentleman came, did he go up and wheelchair ramp? Was that, was that part of it? I mean, he?
No.
Okay, because you're, you're talking ADA.
There, there's two, yeah, there's two different, different situations where we've had people that have said that they have not. They have been limited access because of their disability.
Okay.
So, so what we have is the court system is going to continue to operate and people need access to the court system, which is inclusive of ADA, but normal everyday operations for non-scheduled things, people have to go get to the court, is what the state's saying.
Yeah.
The court is within the county courthouse. So it's upon us to make sure that there's access to the courtroom.
That's what their agreement is.
And, and so that's what their agreement is, so it's, it's pretty unique. And we ran into this the other times where that this place has to be open, but we're off because you don't have the same holiday. And so I'm, I'm just talking out loud here, but I mean, it's, it's a guy that sort of falls into as we're trying to help get our community back to normal operations. Now we're sitting right here trying to find a way to get us back to somewhat normal operations. Fall right into what we're working on.
Well, we're trying to make the un-normal work.
And.
So.
The new, the, the, the new normal.
Well, that's, I'm not asking for a decision today, but I want you guys to be aware and, I, I mean, there, I just, like I said, I'm already listed in one tort claim, I'd rather not have five or six more.
Hey Brad, it's Paul.
Yes, Paul.
Hey, um, I, so a couple things. I know that the Chrysler Center oftentimes accompanies folks over so we could, um, do some education on that side. We could also, um, utilize the Wellness Center because oftentimes, um, those folks are also coming over. So if we, if we educated them on a, some kind of improvised process that may, um, alleviate some of these concerns. And then I can also tell you that, um, all of our police interactions and, um, And then I can also tell you that, um, all of our police interactions and, um. We're not doing a lot of arrests, but we are doing citations, and we are citing them out sufficient, um, timeframes. And so, I mean, we're, we're operating at a very, very limited, um, rate as it is, so I, I don't see the. The necessity to staff a door full-time, um, for the minimal folks that are coming in. Um, if we could get that education out, that they can come down and buzz the back door and that the jail staff can come down and screen them. Um, and, and decide if they need to enter the building for a reason or not. Um, that might be a better plan than to actually put an employee, whether it be from county or from state. Um, have it as is or a- as needed, um, through the jail site.
So Paul, this is Amy, and I, 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 not necessarily pushing back, but I would like a couple of things. We've worked very closely with both the crisis center and the wellness center, they're very aware of what the process is right now. Um, Ms. Stringer and I have worked very closely, and we've been able to do the majority of the restraining orders, stalking orders and that type of thing. All very smoothly by just calling me and me going down and screening and bringing those people in, so that's been fine. Um, the second thing on this one specifically, this gentleman did go to the door to be buzzed in. And unfortunately, since he couldn't communicate with them and they, he couldn't read their lips, he was, still got sent away. And so that may not necessarily help in this situation. The other thing is that I, you know, I, I understand it's different times, but by statute, that court has to be open and accessible. And by agreement, that is the county's responsibility to allow people access to that circuit court.
Yeah, but they might be allowed access, but why should the county have to pay for an employee?
And I don't.
To allow them in?
I, I agree.
I think that should be the state's problem.
Well, and.
If we, if we know the individual, um, that wasn't able to access, if I know what time, if I knew what time. I would be able to communicate with him and let him know what's going on, and I would take it upon myself to screen this individual and lock him upstairs to court. I'm willing to help out on that respect, but I don't know, and I'm sure the court doesn't know, everybody that meets that criteria.
Well, and that's. Exactly, that's, we don't, we don't know that until, you know, they're here, and that's, that's the concern. And I do agree that, you know, the state needs to take some of that responsibility on. But again, let's go back to the agreement, and does the agreement say the state's gonna do that, or does the agreement say the county's gonna provide that access? And it says the county's gonna provide it. I'm not saying that you guys need to staff it. I'm not saying that you need to hire an employee, I'm saying it's an issue, we need to work on a resolution.
So that, so it's Paul again, so the, the other thing is, is, um, all of the local defense attorneys are coming through this back door. And they are being screened by the corrections deputies, um, every single time that they come to the building. And so if they're representing these folks from the court, um, why can't they relate to their, their clients? Um, this limited access and make notification, I mean, we have scheduled visits, um. We've been doing them now for a month with Mr. Holland and with Mr. Arsenal and Mr. Headland. Um, they call ahead and say, I'd like to come see one of my clients at jail, and we have a, a, a new procedure that we're doing with that. Because we're trying to maintain that social distancing. Um, but back to the hearing impaired individual, um, we've made arrangements in the jail, we've actually purchased equipment that allows us to communicate. But I wasn't aware that this even occurred, so I can't address it with the jail staff.
Right.
Um, I, I mean, I can, I can tell them that if somebody's pushing that buzzer, they need to go down there and make contact.
Right.
And we can communicate, um, like I say, we have some, um, equipment that we can communicate with them as well. But I wasn't even aware that that occurred.
So Paul, unfortunately, no, not everybody, not all of the defense attorneys are going and getting pre-screened, just so you know. The majority of them actually are coming through the front door because it's just as easy for them to call us. Um, Mr. Arsenal is one of the ones that likes to do it that way, which is fine. Um, that being said, yes, do I think that the defense attorney could have called the client and handled it differently? Or could things been done? Absolutely. I think that, um, but it wasn't. And so, you know, it was situational, but the thing is, is if it was just a one thing, one-time thing, I would feel differently, but like I said. We've had at least two complaints of the same thing during this timeframe, and so it's establishing a pattern.
So, I'm, I'm not entirely sure exactly what additional measures the county is going to have to look at taking. It sounds like most of the issue so far is gonna break down to communication, whether it's attorneys working with their, their own individual clients. And making sure that we're communicating with, I mean, you, this, you, both these gentlemen, both of these gentlemen that have, uh, had issue, are, did they both, were they both pre-scheduled?
No, and so.
Was the second one scheduled?
The second one was scheduled, the first one was not.
Okay, so. The first one was not, okay, alright.
The first one was not, he's actually, and so there's a, there's a difference, I mean, the first one was, is self-represented, right? And his is a civil claim, and so it's different.
Yeah, yeah, I am.
And then the second one was a criminal case where he had somebody appointed to him, so he actually had an attorney.
Okay, so, but he was scheduled to come in?
He was, yes, he, and he, his attorney was notified that he needed to come in at this date, yes.
So, so Paul, you're, you're, you're saying that you guys have some equipment for, uh, special needs, obviously?
Yeah, we, we actually, we actually purchased equipment and a subscription to language line.
So, so if, if we, are you saying that if we were going to utilize that door? To allow people in to get to the circuit court side, you, your staff, the jailers would take on. Coming down and screening those people, letting them into circuit court, if we utilize that door for this?
Well, we're already staffing that door, we already control the access there, and we're already staffing that, so that would make the most sense to me. Um, the foot traffic in and out of this building is so infrequent right now, that it's not a significant, um, burden to us.
Okay, so that, that's where I wanted to get, because I do anticipate that we're gonna be opening up more in the future. Next week or two or whatever, I may be wrong, but for now, you're willing to let public access. Related to the court system come through that back door and you'll do the screening, and if necessary, for the, uh. Jailers to come down and do that in person.
Yes.
We just need to be wary of those folks that can't climb those six or eight stairs out back, that need to use a ramp, uh, that need to use a ramp for access. That's the only, that's the only time there might be a hiccup, when folks can't climb up those stairs towards the back door and they need to use the ramp. And then when they come in, they need to use the elevator to get upstairs, I'm not saying that's happened, but there's a lot of people that do use, that access the courtroom via the elevator. Uh, and they're not able to climb those six or eight stairs out back, for whatever.
Well, if they're, if they're screened and allowed in, we'll see to it that they can get on the elevator if that's what's needed.
I, I think, Paul, what the problem is, is the buzz-in button is up the stairs to build the buzz-in to get screened.
I get that, so, so my suggestion would be is put some signage on that handicap ramp door that adds the phone number to the jail. And they can contact them and they can go down and open that door.
Amy, do you believe that would work for the circuit court?
Absolutely.
I think that's the best one.
Would, um, you guys like me to put signage together that states that, and what number do they wanna call in, or will Melanie take care of that?
Well, we, we don't have all of your numbers and everything, so I.
But they would be calling.
The jail.
The jail, so that you wouldn't need my number. I mean, our number is posted on the doorway.
Yeah, but.
Your cell phone.
I want, I want to make.
My cell phone, it's on there.
I want to make sure, I, I made it sort of global, and I think Paul got it, is, is that access to the circuit court. So some people will call the circuit court, so your number needs to be on there also, where I was going. Trying to make it flow the best we can, does that make sense?
It does, and my, the circuit court number and my OJD's cell phone number are both listed on ours, on the front door. And so, um, if we wanna, I, I'm fine with it, I mean, that can be listed all over, it's already out there, people can call me anytime.
So, um.
And then I, I think as we move forward with this soft opening, um, we might re-address or we might reassess. Um, the increased level of foot traffic coming in, because it may become problematic for corrections to continue to do it. But as it stands right now, I, there's absolutely no reason why we can't do it. Um, but I think that, I don't wanna commit to this indefinitely, because as the traffic, um, increases in the building, there may be times where we're not able to do that.
No, absolutely, Paul, well, and we, we talked in circles, you're absolutely right that you're even quiet. As we're talking about increasing access to the courthouse, there's gonna have to be something at the main entrance. But let's try it for a week, so let's, let's just go ahead and implement it for this next week, reassess it next Friday, is that good with the board? So signage, coordinate with Melanie, whatever, between the team.
Or coordinate with Paul, to just make sure you're happy with signage and, and.
I, I can, I mean, essentially, I can just add the jail's phone number to the signage that we already have. And so I, I'm.
And then if, if you'll direct them to the east door.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're gonna need a sign there too.
So, I'm down to control that individual access into the building.
Perfect, and Paul, what number do you want them to, um, call?
Six, six zero three nine, that way they don't have to go through the phone tree.
Okay, perfect, thank you, I really appreciate you.
And.
Yep.
And so, are you going, do you have somebody that can put the same signage out in Spanish?
Yep.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys.
What if they're Chinese?
COVID nineteen possibly, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, that might have been politically correct, but, okay.
No, COVID nineteen, that's a non-selective, it can be any nationality. So, um, any other updates? Round of applause? Okay, let's, let's keep rolling.
So, so good, I don't.
I hate to put Mr. Williams on the spot, let's see an imitation of Trump.
I want, I want, I want to see Mark laugh.
No, we're good. Maybe if anyone wants to see my impersonation of Bill Trump and our president, uh, I'm more than happy to do that off the record, so.
I'll turn off the camera.
He is really good at it, I'm kidding, he is really good. Uh, any other department have any questions or updates? That, we.
Excellent.
We got other things on our agenda, I almost adjourned this. Um, people are welcome to stay, we got a couple other things here, and thank everybody so much for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Ben, Judy, you're really tied up today, probably.
Uh, no, I don't think so.
I, I got a little bit more here that I would love to.
Oh, you'll visit?
Well, you don't have to make it, and I'd love to visit with you a little bit.
Definitely.
Okay.
The course wants to move on, everyone, please.
Thank you, um, Department, they've, uh, changing insufficient payment protocol and this other department, we don't have.
I, I, I thought we did this earlier before, last year.
I don't, uh, is Dave not here for you, or do you have any information on him, how are we doing?
He said that you said put it on the agenda for today, and that he was not available, but you guys knew about it.
I think we already did this.
We did that last year, I guarantee you.
I was just.
And we're hoping to go ahead, because.
Yeah, we're already taking care of it, done last time. I'm not, I'm not prepared for this, but yeah, I just think we need to, to, to check back, because all my conversations with Dave. For the last couple of weeks has been surrounding, uh, the change in the office spaces and stuff, I think.
Yeah, I think.
So I haven't talked to him all about this, I actually, when I heard that he had an item for the agenda, I didn't know that it was this until I saw the agenda. And I kinda thought he'd show up here today for this.
Well, he told us that he was busy on Friday.
Right.
So I think that there's miscommunication, I think this is about the space.
Well, that's what I was thinking too, but I don't know.
So, this is, we're changing that to space. Have discussion. And I, and I apologize, because I usually hook into agendas really well, and I would, I.
That's what he said on his cover sheet, I don't know.
I would have, I would have covered that, so we do have that, but I did tell Dave that, uh, that would bring him forward on the Friday. Friday, and I apologize for not getting it specifically on the day that is, um, they have temporary use of economic development office down there. Dave asked about the, my old office, store, both of those offices to be able to be continued as, or be a permanent. Office for women that are pregnant. Um, both of you have heard myself, but it's been, we, I don't know, I'll go ahead and put it out there. I think the economic development office, it stages in the synergy area for building, planning, economic development. As we get our economic development, um, mission and design go forward, so I think that office space is a good location for it.
I'd like to keep economic development in that office, and if we're going to utilize an additional office. Uh, for one of our assessors, I think that we need to utilize probably your old office and transition it.
Consent to both the board?
Yep.
Done.
Simple, uh, but I do want to, thank you, uh, I do wanna go back to the discussion we just had, and, and everybody.
The long one, or the?
The long one, the discussion.
Wait, which long one?
And it, it falls right into our struggles right now of how we open up restaurants, not we, how restaurants open up, how everything opens up. And I haven't looked at the agreement with our commitment to the state, have circuit court within our courthouse. But this, right here, they're, they're operating at a higher level for the public than we are right now, which is creating an issue.
Correct.
And so, as we sat here as commissioners wanting to get our restaurants and everything open up, we're still. Real narrowing down as far as.
Ourselves, ourselves.
And so, as you can feel sort of some anxiety from every department.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I, I just kept looking at ourselves, is this, okay, we're, we're not wanting to maybe commit to. Whether it's temporary part-time, or put somebody there to open up more for.
Well, we definitely don't wanna commit to putting out additional dollars.
Well, it, it falls around dollars, but what is it gonna cost us as government for our services to our people?
Absolutely, I get it.
That there's probably a cost to it.
Yeah.
And, and so, but.
But I think Commissioner Albertson had a point, is that most of those, those requirements for having that bill, having the circuit court open. To the degree that they're wanting us to keep it open, those are state requirements. And so there, it comes down to whether or not who's gonna put the bill, so I understand it's an argument that, mm-hmm, seems, is not always well received.
I've had that argument a lot of times, but the, my point is, is we're more restrictive than the state.
Right, and the state is putting.
And we're, we're gonna beat up in the public, because we want to be less restrictive. On our businesses, obviously.
Right.
So we, sometimes we have to look at ourselves and.
Well, I think Tu- Tuesday, honor me, that we all need to have the ideas that we want for opening up, not only our businesses, but our own courthouse.
I think you just know what I'm saying, and it is, and the thing is.
We're, we're, we're trying to protect our employees, our public and everything, and so we've got to have. Now, since it's been brought forward in a state against accounting scenario, that we're the same.
Right.
We have to do some things, and I think yours exists on Tuesday, a good thought. And just a thinking out loud suggestion, I think maybe we should require anybody that comes in the courthouse that's not an employee. To wear a mask, all of it. And then they can go to any, I, I, I'm, I'm not for dictatorship, I think.
So I'm, I'm perfectly fine with it, but I don't rely on agreements like you guys do sometimes.
So, so if you're gonna, if, if you're gonna do that, we have to do exactly the same, all day long, for every one of us that's in here.
Yeah.
We're already supposed to be doing that.
Well, we haven't had that many things here in the courthouse for that, but that's been a recommendation.
There, there, there's, there's been recommendations for that.
Yeah.
But if, but once we start writing new rules.
Yeah.
We have to man up ourselves and write rules. And I'm, I'm personally.
And I'm I'm personally, what I've seen, and I'm not a doctor, of the masks. There's people tantalizing, they're taking them off and everything. And so wherever if there is a contagion, everything they touch now has it on steroids. Well, I understand with masks, you put them on, you don't touch them, you wear them all day long. So are we going to put a screener up the, the what, somebody screening people? What I mean, what are these are thoughts?
My my thought is exactly that, is that. And we're the hospital, whatever, you have somebody that's down there, they screen people, we start allowing public to come in. I mean, people, the public gets to the hospital right now, don't they? They get screened, they get to the hospital, they go to safe place, they go, they they have to do it by appointment, but again. I mean, what would that be? And doesn't mean I'm right because all this is new, but I'm not, I think masks work very well.
I I had to wear, I had to wear the mask and I caused William to strip him.
Yeah, so did I.
Yeah, so. And I just wore it for an hour and a half, we wanted to.
Well, back, there's no way I'm going to do that here.
You were in that meeting for an hour and a half? With the with this Charlie?
Charlie and Judy, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they they had to quit, they got. They had to quit because of your guys' meeting.
That's a that's a long meeting, that's a very long.
It's a very long meeting to get five words and advice. So.
I think we'll get to Chuck Law.
So I I guess we can talk. I'm not opposed if if next.
I knew you thought.
I haven't been wrong, make it make it that you're supposed to wear a mask and then don't wear a mask. I'm not opposed to that, I just, we have a lot of employees here and if the public coming in requires wearing masks. I think it's of the right frame that that. Rest of us should be masked up because they're probably just afraid of us and passing on the gym.
Well, we've done a wonderful job sanitizing everything in this building, keeping everything clean and wiping down all the surfaces and everything. We haven't been practicing wearing masks too much in the building, but we're generally in our own offices. And but yeah.
So Tuesday, let's let's have that discussion on how we. That is one thing, we do have authority over the doors and open up the public here, but did board up.
It is frustrating though when we're in this position where we even get chastised sometimes for wanting to open things back up. But the state is the state is ult the ultimate authority in whether or not we do or not and whether we lack our restrictions. But it as we've seen in this meeting today, the state is actually less restrictive than we are on some of these things. So where do we go? Which way do they want us to go? And we have to have a plan for beginning this process of opening things back up. And that's what I would like to discuss on Tuesday and I'd like to have partners at the table ultimately. But if all we accomplish next Tuesday is to form a committee and to decide how we would like that committee to be structured, then so be it.
So so what's real interesting as I'm talking about the order comes from the governor and the restrictions. The governor has to pick and choose which ones are going to stay open, which ones are going to be closed. And and that's, I would not want to be in that position that the governor said across the United States. So so anyway, so Tuesday for the agenda for special meetings, Tuesday is the discussion. Possible action on putting a committee together, and we don't have names for that committee at this time. And for the future public access to the courthouse.
Yep.
We have anything else, we have time to put other on the agenda, if you have other thing.
No, that's fine, only for now.
Okay, we will adjourn at fifteen minutes after ten.